Okay, the meeting is being recorded. We'll go ahead and start. So I am going to check for roll call to make sure we have a quorum in order to start the meeting. If you couldn't confirm your attendance when I call your name. And I'll go and order the agenda. So Paul Gerard sitting in for Matt Sabo.
Here.
Tony Royster.
Here.
Holly Walcott. Holly, you're there?
Yes, having technical problems, but I'm here.
It's contagious. Don't worry. David Sanders.
Here.
David Sifuentes sitting in for Marlene Fonteca.
Present.
Chad Bojio.
Here.
Gary Glaze.
Here.
Is there a JL NBC member whose name I did not call who is still in attendance? Mr. Sanders, we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. And we'll call the meeting order at nine oh five for the Joint Management Benefit Committee for August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the next order of business is open the floor to public comments. I will turn it to you, Paul, if we have any comments.
For anybody who is attending by phone and like to make a public comment, now is the time. Please press star six on your phone and announce yourself if you'd like to make a public comment. Hearing none, seeing none.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendation to approve the minutes of June, June second, two thousand and twenty-two. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I approve. I mean, I move.
Tony Royce, got a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
There we go. We have a motion and a second, and we'll take roll call from the committee.
And we'll go in the same agenda order. So we'll start with Paul Gerard, your vote.
Aye.
Paul votes aye. Tony Royce, your vote.
Aye.
Tony votes aye. Holly Walcott, your vote.
Aye.
Holly votes aye. David Sanders, your vote.
Aye.
David votes aye. David Sifuentes, your vote.
Aye.
David votes aye. Chad Bojio, your vote.
Aye.
Chad votes aye. Gary Glaze, your vote.
Aye.
Gary votes aye. It's unanimous. The motion passes.
All right, the minutes are approved from the June second meeting. The next item on the agenda is the committee report twenty-two thirty-five. Determination regarding teleconferencing options for JL NBC meeting pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one. Paul.
Sure, this is the standard report that we've been bringing forth to the committee. It declares or is asking that we need to adopt a resolution declaring that an emergency still exists. And for us to be able to operate these meetings under the Brown Act telephonically as we're currently doing.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion, any questions? And do we need a motion to receive these minutes, or are we just receiving thoughts?
We do need a motion to adopt the resolution.
Adopt it. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I so moved.
Second.
I second.
Move second and third, and we'll take roll call.
And we'll go in the same order again. So Paul Gerard, your vote.
Aye.
Paul votes aye. Tony Royce, your vote.
Aye.
Tony votes aye. Holly Walcott, your vote. Holly, you're there?
She's muted.
I'm struggling.
We'll come back. I hear you. I hear the aye. Thank you, Holly. David Sanders, your vote.
Aye.
David votes aye. David Sifuentes, your vote.
Aye.
David votes aye. Chad Bojio, your vote.
Aye.
Chad votes aye. Gary Glaze, your vote.
Aye.
Gary votes aye. It's unanimous. The motion passes.
Okay, committee report twenty-two thirty-six, International Foundation Employee Benefits Plan Annual Conference. Recommendation Joint Management Committee to approve the necessary funding for the employee benefits trust fund and rest of JL NBC members staff to attend October twenty-second, October twenty-two conference virtually or in person. Is there a motion recommendation?
Paul Gerard, so move.
Second.
Move the second. And again, roll calls that we're here to adopt this motion?
Yeah, the roll call will be to approve the motion and the funding. So we'll go in the same order. Paul Gerard, your vote.
Aye.
Paul votes aye. Tony Royce, your vote.
Aye.
Tony votes aye. Holly Walcott, your vote.
Aye.
Holly votes aye. David Sanders, your vote.
Aye.
David votes aye. David Sifuentes, your vote.
Aye.
David votes aye. Chad Bojio, your vote.
Aye.
Chad votes aye. Gary Glaze, your vote.
Aye.
Gary votes aye. It's unanimous. The motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item number six, report twenty-two thirty-seven, Benefits Trust Fund Staffing Reimbursement for the Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year twenty-one twenty-two.
All righty, that's me. This is Toscus, Benefits Analyst, Employee Benefits Division. Committee Report twenty-two thirty-seven is our staffing reimbursement report for the fourth quarter fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. The report requests that the committee approve reimbursements from the Employee Benefits Trust Fund for personnel department salary costs of the four positions serving the L A Well program and the two serving the Live Well program. Attachment A of the report provides the calculation of these costs. And the L A Well program's total reimbursement amount for the fourth quarter is one hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. And the Live Well program's total reimbursement amount is ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and two cents. And that concludes this report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, discussions from committee members? Hearing none, we'll ask for a motion to approve.
I so move.
Second.
Move then second. Roll call.
And this is our last action item, and we'll go in the same order with Paul Gerard, your vote.
Aye.
Paul votes aye. Tony Royce, your vote.
Aye.
Tony votes aye. Holly Walcott, your vote.
Aye.
Holly votes aye. David Sanders, your vote.
Aye.
David votes aye. David Sifuentes, your vote. David?
Sorry, aye.
Sorry, David votes aye. Chad Bojio, your vote.
Aye.
Chad votes aye. And Gary Glaze, your vote.
Aye.
Gary votes aye. It's unanimous. The motion passes.
Thank you, Paul. We'll go into the committee report twenty-two thirty-eight, twenty-two twenty-three Plan Year Open Enrollment Communications and Activities Report. I assume that's you, Paul, also.
Oh, it's gonna be Ted.
Nope, that's me again.
Hello, Ted.
Hello. I'll be presenting Committee Report twenty-two thirty-eight. This report provides an overview of the two thousand and twenty-two Open Enrollment Communications Campaign for Planning Year two thousand and twenty-three. And our staff is really busy planning and preparing for open enrollment, working closely with our third-party administrator, LifeWorks. We're programming and updating our employee portal and our record-keeping system, as well as working with our communications consultant, Bill Benz and Keenan, to develop our patients' plans and materials. On page one, the background provides a short timeline of our two thousand and twenty-two OE season. Currently, we're in the development stage of our OE materials, which will be ready for release by the end of September so that employees have them in hand when the OE election window begins on October second. So on page two, we discuss the reason for this October second date. As you know, traditionally, open enrollment occurs from October first through October thirty-first. Over the last month, we were informed by LifeWorks that a system-wide shutdown for security maintenance will take place on October first, two thousand and twenty-two, and it's anticipated to take twelve hours. And during that time, the enrollment system cannot be accessed. So in order to accommodate the LifeWorks system shutdown and to not shorten the member election window, we shifted the window by one day from October second, ending November first. So staff does continue to work with LifeWorks to plot out how the open enrollment closing period timeline can succeed despite these shift in enrollment window dates. So on page three, we have a short detail of our OE communications materials. That includes postcards, worksite posters, citywide emails, and our open enrollment package. And the package will include our Choose Well Enrollment Guide, the personalized benefit statements, and a What's New Highlights insert. And a preview of all of these materials in draft format are provided as attachments A through E. And a summary outlining the proposed timeline for the release of all these communication materials can be found on page seven. Now moving on to a few additional educational resources. As COVID protocols and telecommuting continue, similar to last year, we've placed our focus on materials being accessible online, on demand, and by phone. However, we have planned for some in-person activities this year as well. So on page four, we outline our online activities, beginning with our website, keepinglwell.com. It'll include an open enrollment webpage that will serve as a one-stop resource for all things open enrollment, including on-demand short topical videos, electronic versions of our guides, FAQs, and links to the Benefit Central Portal where employees can make their elections online. Now also, on our website, and new for this year, is the ability to make an in-person or a telephone appointment with an L A Well program staff member. So on page five, we outline our in-person activities. Now, the service counter for the Employee Benefits Division Office reopened earlier this year. To maximize staff's ability to manage those in-person services, we launched an appointment system. Now, the appointments can be made for same day or in advance, and staff will continue to use this system throughout the open enrollment window and the correction window periods. Now, another in-person activity that we're planning is our IMED Vision Pop-up Clinics during one week in the month of October. Now, the clinics allow employees to get their annual eye exam and select vision materials using their IMED benefits, and all within a city building. So additional details such as dates and location are still being determined, but we will announce those along with our other OE communications. Now rounding it out on page six, we describe a couple ongoing projects currently in progress that we are targeting to launch before the start of open enrollment. First, our live event mini-guides take specific life events and other benefit topics and concisely narrow the information into an easy two-page read. Now, some examples are listed on page six. And then also in development is a revamp to our online content for new hire employees. And the goal there is to allow new hire employees to easily find the information that is applicable to their specific new employment situation. Now, lastly, our member advocates from the city's health plans will continue to be available for one-on-one virtual visits. And our targeted communications will be used to remind employees of those specific actions they may need to take to successfully retain the benefit elections that they make during the open enrollment window period. So that concludes the open enrollment overview report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from the members?
I actually have two questions about two separate things in here. Regarding, or I guess one is more of a concern regarding changing the, shifting that enrollment period. I'm a little concerned about bringing it into November because I don't want the, I don't want members to get confused and have November stuck in their head and then beginning calls next year, particularly with any new hires getting calls next year. Oh, well, last year it was November. You know, I thought I had till November. That's what we did last year. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. And then I think it raises a lot of questions if people are just getting their regular notifications in the mail and it just has a different date. And I think that might have some, that might start some confusion. So it, my understanding is that it's, the security maintenance is just supposed to take like twelve hours or so. Is it possible that we could just keep the regular? I don't know how many people actually enroll on that first day. I can't, I wouldn't imagine it's a lot, but I could be wrong about that. So that, that's, that's really my first kind of rambling concern about that. It's just that it maybe creates more confusion and I know it does also mention, you know, as it says, compounding an already difficult correction window period. So I know we've had some issues with the open enrollment period in the past few years. So that also kind of makes me a bit concerned. Do we have that? Do we have confidence in that, I think is my question there?
So I can answer both of those, actually. So one, one thing you said about the first day. So that when LifeWorks had raised this to us and told us, we immediately asked it, you know, it, what the options were, how, how we could mitigate this somehow differently. And they made it very clear that this was across the board, could not be changed, and it happened on October first. The understanding that we are given is it's expected to take twelve hours. It's a huge undertaking. Quite honestly, I think there's a lot of risk in, in the twelve-hour period itself from, from what I understood from it. It does fully shut down the system, so it will be unavailable. If someone goes to keepinglwell.com and then tries to log into the portal, it'll just give them the error message to them down. So I, the concern that we had was creating a narrative that would, would get the employee to position where they would, they would have that negative experience. In past years, online enrollment is where people go on the first day, and it may remain later on throughout the, throughout the month. But that would be where they'd go. When we talked with LifeWorks as well, there was, there was no other option. They couldn't have the call center back up to be able to take enrollment on October first because the system's down. The, the same system the call center is using is down. Everything's down. So that's just out of a day. We had a concern with the perception of the lost day for members thinking that they were being denied a day of enrollment choice. What we are attempting to do is make it clear that this is a one-time exception, that going to November first is just for this year. It's never, it's, it's not a permanent trend. It's not a continuance. I also have a concern about being able to close open enrollment successfully at the end of the November period. We are actively talking with LifeWorks and their vendors about how to mitigate that risk. We're looking at different options in being able to produce those confirmation statements. That, that's, that's the key. That's, that's the difficult part. In the closing period after open enrollment ends, for the vendor LifeWorks to go through, close all the elections, make sure that they're all correctly closed, and then generate all the confirmation statements so that members can verify and view that what they did was correct. And lots of times, that's a big key moment for members. They, they either misunderstood something or something was recorded incorrectly. That, so that's really important in our process. Making sure that there's enough time to do that is, is key and crucial, and we're putting a lot on LifeWorks to make sure that they can pull that off. I do say that we're not there yet enough to be able to have a full plan exactly of what that's going to look like with the shortened day. We're against the timeline, though, because we are needing to launch open enrollment right away. So we, we had to make a, a decision to move forward that way. I think, though, I think we'll be able to confidently create a plan with LifeWorks to address the closed-period situation. That's going to be the best benefit for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. My other question is maybe smaller about the open enrollment packages. Why, how come that's switching back to, and I'm not against it being in-house, but why is that switching back? And isn't that something that's part of the scope of work for them? Are we getting a credit for that part of the contract, or how, how is that working? Because I, I just don't, I want to make sure that it's not like double, you know?
No, excellent question. It is part of the scope of work, but it's a passer expense. We have no, so everything that we, that the fulfillment vendor pays, we pay directly. So there's no cost savings in using them or not using them, the fulfillment services. We've, in using the fulfillment services, they are the company that is subcontracted by LifeWorks. They deal with lots of clients all around. It's usually a fight and an argument to be able to get into their schedule of being able to have our, as large as we are as a city, we're not the largest client that has open enrollment for them. So, so we usually have to get within their schedule to be able to have ours happen on a time, and it's, it's always a struggle. We've used GSD for, for decades before, so going back to them is potentially a cost savings as well because there's, we might be able to get more of a discount with them than the fulfillment vendor. That's still to be seen. But it's something that we know and something that is easier to schedule.
Okay, thank you for that. That's interesting with the scheduling thing. You'd think we would have some kind of priority, but I'm biased. Thank you. Appreciate it.
In addition to that, Paul Gerard has offered Tony, Tony Royce's group additional hiring authorities so to make sure we can get this done. I understand.
Yeah, and we have a special coupon for this committee.
Thank you, sir.
I would gladly give Mr. Royster anything he desires, save for the fact that I am not in charge of the budget.
Any other?
Mr. Royster, you have my full support and you always have, for the record.
Yeah, I'll, I'll remind Matt of that.
You do that, and three dollars will get you a cup of coffee.
And I believe he still wants the coupon also, so we'll go. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? If not, thank you very much, Ted. We'll go to the next item. Paul, is there anything else on that? I'm sorry, the agenda, on that agenda item? If not?
That, that's a non, yeah, non-action item.
Okay, committee report twenty-two thirty-nine. Program update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to go over the Live Well program report for June two thousand and twenty-two. Starting at the beginning, we give a rundown of the June newsletter, which encouraged spending time outdoors, which could boost mental and physical health. We included an announcement for the new Live Well program beginning July first, which would consist of new prizes at every level, and promoted the second annual Fourth of July run. Included the schedule of the life fitness classes offered via Zoom, our monthly cooking class, a testimonial from a public works sanitation employee, and ends with a healthy recipe. Moving down to part two of the report, which included a summary of the traffic on our website. The numbers in item A show one thousand five hundred unique visitors and around three thousand page views. The first graph reflects the home and wellness event page as the two most viewed in June, while the second graph indicates similar numbers in visitors compared to last month, returning to an average, returning to average numbers from the spike in April. And moving on, we see-
I'm sorry, what's, what's a unique visitor?
Unique visitors, like new visitors, I believe. Daniel?
New visitors would be, you know, looks at IP addresses. It's the first time someone has visited the site.
So you're calling unique visitors? Or is that a type in here? Is that correct? Unique? Is that the word?
Oh, yes. So unique, it would have distinction because, you know, you could have someone tons of times during the month.
Common IT term.
Oh, an IT term, okay. Okay, good to know. Thank you.
It's a good clarification.
I know too. Moving down, we see the social, social media posts we shared on Instagram and Facebook and included a breakdown of the Zoom exercise classes. And we offered fifty-eight live classes with one hundred and eighty-two participants. The most popular, let me move down a little bit of the graph. A little bit more. And there's a graph of, of classes. And so we offered, yeah, we offered fifty-eight live classes with six hundred, six hundred and eighty-two participants. The most popular classes continue to be midday stretching, bar, and zumba. These are the most important highlights for Live Well in June. And does anyone have any other questions?
Hearing none. Thank you. That concludes your report. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which is twenty-two forty report. Audit programs and activities, projects and activities, I'm sorry, report.
Chung, I think we, your audio is not connected. Can you hear me now? Yes. Yes. Okay, great. Sorry, apologies for that. Again, this is Chung. Good morning, J M B C members. This is Chung, and I will be going over some of the highlights from the projects and activities report. First up on page one, we have an Anthem Network update. Anthem's network agreement with Adventist Health was due to expire in July. Courtesy notice has been sent to affected members, but both parties are continuing to negotiate and have agreed to extend the deadline through, sorry, one second here. They've agreed to extend the agreement through mid-August now. So as soon as we have more updates, we will report it to the J M B C committee. Moving on to the second item on page two, we were recently advised by Kaiser that they had a privacy breach involving a stolen Kaiser iPad. Per Kaiser's investigation, they do not have any specific evidence that information was accessed or and/or viewed, but have notified affected patients regarding the breach. Of the seventy-five thousand affected patients, about thirteen hundred were city employees and their dependents. Next up on page two is an update on the H R P project. Staff previously provided an update that the workday system would be going live on May twenty-second. Following go-live, staff has began noticing some data-related issues cropping up. These were brought up with the H R P team. Some of these issues have been resolved, but there are others that are still pending. Staff is continuing to work with the H R P team and the L A Well Record Keeper Life Works to identify and to develop short-term workaround until more permanent solutions can be implemented. Staff is also working on a more comprehensive H R P project update, which will be brought to the J M B C at a later meeting. And with that, I would like to bring this report to a close. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions, comments from committee?
I have, I have really just two concerns, I think I would say. The Anthem Network update, I think this is the, I want to say the third time that we've had something like this. And I'm concerned about a pattern of Anthem's negotiations. Is there some, my concern is that there's some sort of practice that they're just not doing properly, or I don't know if this is a systemic, I mean, I haven't heard it in other areas, so I'm not sure if it's an industry thing or if it's, if it is specific to Anthem. But it's, it's concerning, especially since, I mean, Adventist is a big one. You know, the ones we've heard before have been, you know, generally a little bit smaller groups, smaller hospitals. Adventist is pretty large. That's, that's a big organization to lose, and you know, it's, it's not just, okay, we're losing this and they can go to other facilities. Yes, there's, there are plenty of other facilities, but all of those facilities are also currently impacted by the pandemic, by staffing shortages. So it's not just this one thing. This is on top of all these other compounding factors. And so I'm really concerned about access and if this is a pattern, if this is some sort of, if there's a business practice here that we need to be concerned about. So that's one. And then I'll briefly say like, if I'm not too concerned about the, I was a part of, I was part of the seventy-five thousand people in that Kaiser breach, and I got the letter and, you know, it seems fine to me, but I'll say the, the HR and payroll update is definitely concerning. I know you guys are going to come back with, with a more involved report, so I'll just leave it at that and just, it's concerning. That's all. Thanks.
So what we, what we can do, so Anthem is not prepared for, for answering any questions, but, but since this is a network update that is not resolved yet, it will come back on the next month's report. We can arrange for Anthem to be able to answer questions at that time.
that is not resolved yet, it will come back on the next month's report. We can arrange for Anthem to be able to to answer questions at that time.
Thank you. And then just briefly, the, the staffing summary, how are you guys doing with filling vacancies? Because I know there's, there's quite a number. And I know that that can be really challenging, so I just want to kind of check in on that as well.
Well, we have been interviewing for, to fill the vacant positions for some time now. We were able to hire a benefit special, a benefit specialist recently, but we've also faced challenges. We've made several offers, but unfortunately, those candidates that we had made offers to, they had declined to accept our offers. So but we're continuing to look at different avenues, you know, that we could pursue to fill these vacant positions.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
And again, Mr. Gerard, Mr. Gerard will probably offer a coupon for that one also. Any other questions?
David, David, once again, lack of an understanding of what the C A O does, anyway.
I just said Paul, so anyway.
No, I think you said Mr. Gerard, but.
Okay, that's correct. Any other questions on report twenty-two forty comments?
None of us understand what the C A O does, Paul.
And we aim to keep it that way.
Hearing none, we are including items, request a future agenda item. Are there any proposed future agenda items to be placed on for next month?
Oh, actually, there was one thing I, I didn't ask earlier. I'm sorry, this is totally out of turn, but just a procedural thing, if, as far as the I F funding approval, is there a reason why it happens kind of so late in the, in the cycle? My concern is that, you know, that it fills up really quickly, and you end up being at like the last furthest hotel of our way, and that can be a little bit impactful schedule-wise. So I was just curious if there, if there's a reason, and you know, maybe there's like a fiscal, you know, reason that I'm not aware of, but is there a reason why we can't do that sooner so that we can kind of get that processed more quickly?
We, we can definitely try to bring that report sooner next year in in moving forward in the future. There's, there's not really a reason other than us seeing that the, the information is available on the website for us to be able to identify the cost. That's the only thing that we need to wait for.
Okay, no worries. I appreciate that. I know some people, and I, I know, I'm not suggesting this, but I know some, like, very on-top-of-it people purchase their next years at the current years. Like, while they're there, they come with a check and like pay for their registration for the next year already. And I'm not suggesting that. That's, that's like honor student territory, but just maybe a little bit sooner would be helpful. Thank you. I appreciate it, Paul.
Thank you, Shana. And with that, our next meeting is scheduled September first, regular meeting, then we have the October date. If there's nothing else, hearing nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, and all have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.